It is 5:30 PM on Monday, June 6th, if I have my calendar correct. And this is a public meeting of the school board of West Bend Joint School District Number 1. More than 24 hours prior to the meeting, notice of the time, place, date, and subject matter of this meeting was posted at the entrance doors of the Education Service Center and at the West Bend Community Memorial Library. A copy was also sent to the Daily News, WIBD, Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, and other media sources that have requested notice of our meetings. I'll pause and ask our superintendent to confirm that this meeting was properly posted.
Yes, it was.
Great. Thank you. I invite you to join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. Let's rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's the best pledge we've had.
I think that is. We're just gonna pause and recognize the most hearty Pledge of Allegiance we've had. So thank you to our guests. Appreciate it very much. All right. We recognize a quorum of our school board members present. We have six members present. Nancy Justman will be joining us shortly. Since we have a quorum, we will proceed with our business. And our next item of business is the approval of our agenda, which was circulated in advance. I would move to approve this agenda. Is there a second?
A second?
I mean, current motion, second to approve the agenda as presented. Any final discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, thank you. That motion carries. All right. We are very, very excited to have an important recognition tonight. We are recognizing Scholastic Cadets Winter Guard. And I'm trying to think who is going to lead us.
Kathy Mino.
Kathy Mino.
Kathy Mino is gonna lead us. I'm gonna help get everyone to come back.
Great. Welcome, everybody.
Come on, friends, all in the red t-shirt. I mean, I'm...
That's why I don't trick around with this. We're gonna check on... I'm on high school phone.
You can feel free to come back here.
I'm good.
That's right. Welcome, everybody.
Kathy, take it away. We're just taking a shot for you guys.
This is fine. Have we got to go?
Go ahead and hit it on the bottom so you can see the green button.
Underneath the button on the side.
Do great. Testing.
Oh, good evening. Thank you for inviting us here. We are honored to be recognized by the West Bend School Board. I'd like to start by recognizing our seniors who have aged out this year: Kayla Lemmons, Lexi Klosinski, and Sophia Demlo. Combined, they have devoted 18 years to Winter Guard and have been instrumental in growing our program. Please welcome Sophia Demlo, who would like to share the impact Guard has had on her life.
Hi, my name's Sophia Demlo. I've been doing Guard for seven years. I was on the middle school team for three years and the high school team for four years. Guard has been a huge part of my life. I have so many great memories and I will cherish those forever. Now that I've graduated high school, I can't compete with West Bend Winter Guard, but I hope I can continue to be a part of things and help out to make Guard as fun as it was for me. I want to talk about how Guard has changed my life for the better. Starting in middle school, I started to struggle with behaving and being successful with my sport. The head coach and one of my favorite teachers, Ms. Mino, stood up for me and was one of my biggest advocates. She kept me on the Guard team and encouraged me to keep doing Guard, and I am very grateful for the encouragement because I continued to do Guard and it was one of the best decisions I've ever made. Guard taught me how to work as a team. It taught me hard work, commitment, and discipline. Guard taught me so many values and life skills. It helped shape me into the person I am today, and I'll forever be grateful. I hope kids continue to do Guard because it's not just a sport, it's a family. And it teaches you things that you need in life. It certainly helped me and I'm sure it will help kids in the future. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Sophia. Next, I'd like to turn the mic over to Senior Captain Kayla Lemmons, who has awarded one of only seven scholarships from the Midwest Color Guard Circuit. Kayla was recognized for being a seven-year Winter Guard member, scholar-performer, two-time captain, participating in community events, balancing school and two jobs along with several extracurricular activities, including Secretary of the National Honor Society, varsity tennis player, lead cello, editor-in-chief of the school newspaper, vice president of Key Club, and volunteer camp counselor. Kayla is a wonderful role model for our Guard members and we are so very proud of her and all her graduates. Now Kayla will speak on behalf of our high school team.
I promise I'm not super nerdy. That just makes me look like it. So I've been a part of the Color Guard program since 2006 grade, and I don't know why I joined it, I'll be honest. I think it's because that's what the cool kids were doing and I wanted to be a cool kid. So that's kind of how I started. Well, anyway, so our team started this season in the... As the high... As like, there's different categories that you can be in for our program. And due to our high school being where it is, what it is, we were in the Scholastic Regional A and it was, we had 11 members this year. So we had both kids from East and West, grades nine to 12, and it was very hard. But this is the fourth year that our team has been around and we're super excited and proud of our accomplishments we made. This year, our show was called Phoenix Eternal and it was performed to the song Circle of Stones by Tina Malia. As a result of our high school score during the first competition in Alquinn? Alquinn, okay. Algonquin, Illinois. We won our division, as they said, and we got bumped up a class to this class of AA. Each member was awarded a gold pin. Pin? We have our gold pins. And we were announced, as I quote, "Congratulations, West Bend. This is like winning the SRA circuit championships, but at the first competition of the season." So it was pretty cool. And we're really proud of us. We haven't done that before. Anyway, so on my left, Sophia, Michael Sipe, Cheyana Griswold, Maleka Giniuski. I didn't butcher it. And Annabelle Miller. And there's just a couple of our girls. Great.
All right, thanks, Kayla. Moving on to our Scholastic Cadets. We have three eighth-grade captains who are aging out. They are Aubrianna Hoff, Gomisi, and Sophia Gallo. These dedicated captains demonstrated terrific leadership skills throughout our season. They will provide an overview of their team.
Hi, my name is Aubrianna Hoff and I am an eighth-grade rugby freshman and I just finished my third year on the West Bend Scholastic Cadets team. Our West Bend Scholastic Cadets team is made of 14 hard-working fifth- through eighth-years. Our show Find Your Boys is performed to the song Speechless from Aladdin movie sung by Naomi Scott.
Hi, my name is Sophia Gallo. This is my third year competing with the Scholastic Cadets. Our team earned the title of Scholastic Cadets Class 2022 Champions. A first-place trophy and champion banner were presented to the team. And each competitor received a gold medal in MWC GC finals patch.
In West Color Guard circuit.
Hello, my name is Gomisi and this is my second year competing with the Scholastic Cadets. All members, competing members that are here today are Maya, Amelia, Casey, Kaylee, Ellie, Hannah, Jackie, myself, Sophia, and Aubrianna. Okay, thanks, guys.
I just wanted to do that. While we congratulate our cadets, special thanks goes out to high schoolers Cheyana and Maleka. Step forward, you two, for working with this team on their equipment skills and show choreography. We work with you guys a lot, right? So round of applause. Good job, you guys. Lastly, we are very pleased to present the West Bend Mini Cadets. This team is made up of 12 gals ages two through 10. Their program entitled Heroes features various songs to honor everyday heroes. Teachers, raise your hand if you're a teacher in the show. Okay? Military? Nurses? We're nurses. And firefighters. Yeah, firefighters. This team is always a crowd pleaser, receiving standing ovations when they perform at Winter Guard shows. In addition, they have been invited to perform their hero show at the Washington County Fair on Military Day at the end of July. Uh, let's see. We have most of our minis here, right? This is Mila. And we have Lexington. You guys can wave. And we have Emily. We have Yasmin, the youngest. Yasmin, can you wave? We have Skylar, Tegan, Ella. I see fingers down here. Is that Amaya?
Yeah.
Aria and Reyna. And you guys wanna raise your hand if you're one of my grandkids? Two of my Maisian and Asherton kids. Right? Okay, great. All right, well, thank you, minis. I'm happy to report that West Bend is extremely well-respected in the Guard community and this is thanks to our hard-working Guard members, their supportive families, and our volunteer staff. Thanks again for honoring these talented, dedicated Guard members. Appreciate it.
Five, six, seven, eight! West Bend Winter Guard!
Thank you very much for the presentations. This is amazing. The school board members, we see all our meeting materials and things in words, but it's really nice to see this, you know, to see it right in front of you and see the product. Thank you so much, everyone, for coming. We appreciate it very much. All right. As this group is exiting, I'll turn to the next agenda item, which is public participation. I did not receive any public participation cards, so I'll just pause for a moment just to make sure that there aren't any tonight. Not seeing any. So we will move on to the next agenda item then, which is our consent agenda. And on our consent agenda, we have minutes of the May 23, 2022 Regular Board Meeting. This person is posted to May 28, 2022. There are eight contracts to review, five resignations, no retirements. What's the items on the consent agenda? Did anyone want to discuss any particular item on the consent agenda? Hearing none. I would move to approve this consent agenda. Would there be a second?
Very good.
Thank you. Joel, motion and second to approve the consent agenda. Any final discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. That motion carries. We will move on to action items and we have our Head Start Quality Improvement Grant agenda item next. I believe Jamie Molson is coming forward to walk us through that. And my reflection is, this was a discussion item last time, so this looks familiar. We welcome Jamie back.
Steve Hoffman.
Hi, there. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for having me again this evening. I guess I'll start with, are there any questions regarding the Quality Improvement Grant? I know Mr. Durant had spoken a bit about it on the 23rd. But if you have any additional questions?
Any questions from board members?
Okay, so it...
Go ahead, please.
It's a routine part of the Head Start Grant, so every few years we get additional funds that get included and are sustainable moving forward into our basic grant. So that's what this one is for. It's an additional $10,000 that'll be added to that for next year.
I move to approve the Head Start Quality Improvement Grant proposal to increase program staff in the 2022-2023 school year as presented. Is there a second?
No, sorry.
Thank you, John. Motion and second to approve the grant proposal. Final discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Appreciate it very much. Thank you. All right, we're on to reports. And first, we have our Curriculum Committee Report. And I'll turn that over to Tommy Schmidt. Tommy?
Thank you. We had a curriculum committee on Tuesday, May 24th, and we had an excellent report from the Human Growth and Development Advisory Committee. I'm so pleased with how that worked out. We had really good representation from the whole community and they worked everything out amongst themselves so that everything should go really smoothly going forward. And I hope, I think they set an example for how I think curriculum committee should go moving forward. I'm very, very pleased and thank you so much for everyone who participated. We also discussed summer school enrollment and that's going very well. There's so much offered and the start times are staggered in case you're a parent or guardian that needs to drive to multiple schools to drop off and pick up kids. And there's also a jumpstart program in case you want your child to get acclimated to the new school that they're gonna be starting at. I know my kids always appreciated that. We are gonna hear the... From the Human Growth and Development Advisory Committee, so I don't want to talk too much about that. But the next curriculum board... Sorry, committee meeting will be on June 14th at 9:30. However, after that, we're gonna try to have it every third Tuesday at 8:30 going forward.
Thank you. Any questions for Tommy? Thanks for the report. Then we move to the Policy Committee Report. And Joel Onger will give that.
Yep. Policy Committee also met on May 24th. We were talking about the 300 Series, which is our instruction policies and there are a lot of them. We got through some of them and then we are going to politely refer some of them to the Curriculum Committee. You're welcome. And some of them are around grading and, you know, questions on how we do grading in the school district. We have policies on that. And so that's just one example, but that makes sense, that our curriculum committee along with the administration who serve and help that committee take a look at it. So there are some of those. Final reading of the 500 Series will come at our next board meeting. There were some emails flying around today to schedule our next policy meeting, so if you have jacked your email, Chris and John, please do that. We're hoping to schedule at least one more meeting in the month of June and probably two in July is what we're hoping for. So kind of shooting for the 4 o'clock to 6 o'clock hour on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, Thursdays was kind of what was emailed out. I think there was a Monday in there as well. So as soon as we get those scheduled, we will post them and continue the work.
Great. Any questions for Joel? Thank you for the report. And our next report is the Seclusion and Restraint Report. And I don't say that Superintendent Wimmer and our Director of Student Services, Emily Malmstrm, will kind of jointly present this. So I'll turn it over to you.
I'll just give it over. Emily Malmstrm will give us some background. So this is an annual piece. It's governed by state statute that we provide a report that's reviewed to the board level and then we also submit it to DPI. We've had a lot of discussion around student behaviors. This is a piece of behavior as well. Emily's gonna go through kind of how we train, what are all those pieces, so that you're not just looking at the numbers piece of that report. That'll come at a future discussion. But then we also wanted to, as we think about this piece of the puzzle, the first semester behavior report, the school reports that we've been giving, we'd like to then get together all of our behavior data. So we'd like to just open up a discussion for the board as well. What would you like to see in that end of your report as we move forward? Because again, that's been a really big topic, a lot of work, a lot of things that we've been responding to. So we want to make sure as we prepare just the data around that that we're including the things that the board wishes to review. I'll let Emily take that away.
All right. Thank you very much. My... Is this working? Is your light on? All right. Here, let me go. All right. Good evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk to you a little bit about seclusion and restraint and the statutory requirements that kind of govern that process or the use of that restrictive measure within our school district. Superintendent Wimmer indicated that the intent of tonight's report is really just a foreshadow and to build kind of background knowledge for you so that you know what to expect when we bring forward that annual report that is due December 1st, I think is the actual date. So I'm gonna start out. I want to talk to you a little bit about those statutory requirements. They're governed by Wisconsin Act 118 and it really provides requirements for school districts to be considering when we are equipping our staff with the skills and tools that they need to make decisions about student behavior. So the first thing that I want to say is that when we talk about seclusion and restraint, we're really talking about very restrictive interventions. And what's most important for you to know and recognize about the use of these interventions is that they are truly only intended to be used when there's an imminent threat to the safety, the physical safety of another person. So staff students or the student who the staff members interfacing with. And the intent is that it's truly a last resort, that staff members have utilized all of the other tools that they have, all of the other interventions that are connected to that student's individualized behavior intervention plan, and that they're in a position where they're really trying to make a decision about keeping individuals safe in the environment. The other thing that's really important that you know and understand is that the only individuals who are able to use seclusion or restraint, those most restrictive measures, are individuals who are trained and certified in crisis prevention. So I want to talk to you a little bit about kind of our process for ensuring that staff members are adequately trained. And then in addition to that, some of the other things that we're doing really to build skills in all of our staff so that they feel really equipped to support students who are demonstrating challenging behavior. I want to start out, first of all, just by defining or providing you with those statutory definitions. So seclusion is defined as the involuntary confinement of a student in a room or area where the student is prevented from leaving. And I think that's really important to highlight. The student is prevented from leaving. So we very often will find an alternative learning environment for a student who's struggling because for some kids, they need a quiet space. They need a minute to de-escalate. But in those situations where you're choosing an alternative learning environment, it's not a seclusion if the student is able to leave at will. So I want to make sure that you understand that that's kind of the defining piece to that. And then physical restraint is a personal restriction that immobilizes or reduces the ability of a student to move any part of their body. And clearly, that's the most restrictive option and the option that we want to use only in the event, absolutely only in the event that there's a risk to safety.
And just for examples of those, so let's say we've got a young one at an elementary who has difficulty controlling their own behavior. They have difficulty understanding boundaries and all of a sudden take off, are going to exit a school that's on a busy road. We're going to physically intervene in that. You could have, you know... I'm just trying to think, you know, scaling some, you know, piece of equipment and, you know, they're just not there yet with some of their skills where it's becoming a danger. They're acting haphazardly. We might physically intervene. So it's not that we're going in and looking for pieces, but as Emily's saying, there's an imminent threat to the child themselves or maybe they're just without concern for their own physical safety or anyone in proximity swinging arms. They maybe have scissors, something like that. We're gonna physically, you know, ensure safety for kids. So just to give some context of what that might look like.
And that's, you know, when I think about examples, even in my own experience, I mean, that idea of a preschool-aged child or a young elementary child who might have an intellectual disability, might have, might be, you know, have very complex autism spectrum disorder. Sometimes their ability to regulate in response to a direction is not there. And that would absolutely be one of those times where you would need to make the decision that you need to keep the child safe. In terms of training requirements, we do use a crisis prevention, a formalized crisis prevention strategy called nonviolent crisis intervention. We have in-district trainers, so we have multiple student service individuals who are trained to be trainers. And that's really, I mean, fiscally, it makes really good sense, the training. You know, there's an investment there, but then we have the ability to schedule and train staff as we need to throughout the year. We actually have an assistant principal right now who is a trainer as well, which I think brings really good value to the team. So all of our special education staff are trained and they maintain their certification. There are guidelines, district guidelines, and there's also guidelines through the Crisis Prevention Institute around how you maintain your certification. We require all of our elementary staff to train annually, even though certification really is a three-year revolving expectation. And we do that because we recognize that the importance of the nonviolent crisis intervention training is not actually designed like you think about... We're talking about seclusion and restraint, so it's easy to make the assumption that the intent of the training is focused on seclusion and restraint. The intent of the training is actually focused on preventing staff from having to use seclusion and restraint. So the training really focuses on teaching staff how to recognize and respond to the signs and signals that students display so that you're able to read and respond in a way that de-escalates behavioral situations. And it really teaches staff to focus on understanding why behavior occurs because in order to implement the correct behavioral responses or interventions, you need to have an understanding of why behavior is occurring. And I'll give you a really kind of a simplistic example. You know, I think about, over the years, I've served lots of kids who are diagnosed with autism spectrum disorder. And a lot of times, kids with autism spectrum disorder have difficulties with sensory regulation. And so a particular environment might pose a sensory overload that results in them looking or responding in a way that could be interpreted as behavioral. A consequence or a disciplinary response in that situation isn't gonna change the behavior because that child's need comes from a very different place. And so that's a really simplistic example, but we really try to examine the needs of all kids so that the intervention that we're putting in place meets their need and helps them move forward. So we do this training annually for all of our elementary folks because they tend to be the individuals who are most opted in a position where they're making a decision about keeping the child safe using those strategies. But we also train all of our district special education staff in compliance with that certification. In addition to that, beginning this year, all of our district administrators will be training. We actually have had training set up on Friday, which I didn't know was a day off for them, but they're all coming in and I have owned that and apologized. But it's important work and we need to make sure that our administrators who are leading these teams at the building level know and understand the practices as well. In addition to that, I just wanted to highlight a couple of other training things In addition to that, I just wanted to highlight a couple of other training things that we're really looking to build upon over the course of the next year. So one of the things that we recently did is we added a behavior coach to our district. Amy Carver, some of you had the opportunity to meet her, she was one of our ROLPS winners. She was here, I think it was last meeting. Amy is outstanding and has just the depth of knowledge related to truly understanding the behavioral needs of kids. And she's going to be working district-wide, beginning, actually, she'll start some of her work this summer. Her primary areas of focus will be supporting our professional learning, so ensuring that our staff have access to the professional learning that they need to feel successful in supporting kids.
I am so sorry.
And then, that's all right. And then she's also going to be working to, working individually with teams, IEP teams, small teams intervention teams, to design behavior intervention plans on behalf of kids. And then one of her, one of the things that we've charged her with is to develop a series of trainings that really focus on collaborative and proactive solutions for behavior intervention. So all of our student services staff next year will be required to take a two-part training that really focuses on the idea of being able to identify when kids are struggling with behavior, is it because they have lagging skills, meaning they don't have the skills, whether it's academic, social, emotional, regulatory, to manage a particular situation? Or because there's unsolved problems? Sometimes kids are behaving in a manner because something, they have, there's a problem that isn't solved in their environment. And for some kids, that's social, and just responding with a disciplinary response is not necessarily going to set them up with the tools that they need to solve the problem that they're encountering. So that will be a requirement of all of our student services staff, it will also be offered to all of our district staff. And then, oh, go ahead.
I think one of the other pieces too, in addition to the staff training, when you're looking at that, there's, which you references, specific individual plans, all of those things. You know, families are really partners in that, they have a deep understanding of their child, some of the reasons behind some of those behaviors. And there's significant amounts of planning, behavioral planning, when things are calm, so that everyone's on the same page with the response, communication that's required by that act. So it's not just that we report to the board, but there is required communication to all the families, they're often engaged in the planning to support that behavior. We're also generally mimicking things across environments, school and home, for consistency, because sometimes that can be a behavior thing, they try one thing in one environment, another in another, so working on that. And also engaging with therapists, if there's a therapist, working with the family outside of that, so that we're making sure that there's alignment across those pieces. Again, significant amounts of communication and pre-planning, developing a formalized plan, and then notification when you have to execute pieces of that plan to occurs.
Absolutely. And actually, as you were talking, I was thinking about one other, it wasn't part of my planned presentation here, but Superintendent Wimmer was talking about just that collaboration across agencies. And one of the things that is actually going to be offered as part of our professional learning playbook, so we are offering staff a little bit of a different model for professional learning next year, where they have some voice and choice and ability to pick courses or discussion topics based upon what's really important to them in their classroom at a given moment. And one of the courses that we're offering relates to a strategy for doing that, that's called Return to Learn. We have a lot of kids who are in and out of our system for a variety of reasons. They might be coming back from a virtual platform. We unfortunately do have students who are in and out of different types of inpatient or outpatient medical and/or mental health treatment centers. We have kids who are being served in different alternative, through different alternative services. And when those kiddos come back into their school, and that is always our goal, is to get kids back into their home school, the coordination that goes into that can be pretty extensive. So we've actually developed, in collaboration with some training we did this year, a process for that, that we're going to really be working with staff on, in terms of being able to identify those really unique needs in those situations where kids are returning to a more traditional learning format. The one other training, and again, this is not all encompassing, we have multiple options that are going to be available to teachers, and we'll be able to help teachers select trainings. I mean, administrators will be able to do that based upon the needs of the kids coming into classrooms and such, so there's, it's much more extensive than this. But I did want to mention that one of the other required training at the high school level will be focused on verbal de-escalation. So that will be required of all high school staff, that will happen at the beginning of the school year. And really what that is, it is, it is the meat of the nonviolent crisis intervention training, and it really focuses on ensuring that the strategies we're using to interface with kids or communicate with kids when they are clearly becoming anxious or there's high tension, match the response in a way that it de-escalates instead of triggers increased behavior. So that will also be a requirement. And then I did want to just kind of close out by reiterating some of what Superintendent Wimmer just talked about, and that's related to reporting requirements and the team response when there is a seclusion and restraint. So absolutely, we're required once annually to come back and share that data with the school board, we report that to the Department of Public Instruction. But I do think it's important to note that anytime there is an event, teams are required to notify parent the same day. So they will either call, email, conference with that particular parent on a given date. And then they're required to generate a report. And that report has very specific requirements that really require the teacher or the team of teachers to think about not only the behavior, but why the behavior happened, what they did both positively and what they could do differently in terms of interventions moving forward. That report is submitted and is accessible and viewed by myself and my student services team and the building administrator. And that same report goes to the parent within three business days. So the parent receives that initial contact and then they receive a follow-up. And then the building administrator or designee, sometimes that designee might be one of my student services coordinators, it could be myself, it could be a district administrator, but it is generally the building administrator, is required to meet with that team, debrief on the situation that occurred, and go through the same process of, did we do everything we said we needed to do? Are there things that we need to do differently? What are those? And then finally, if it's a student who has an individualized education plan, and I am going to tell you, the majority of the time when we are using a strategy this restrictive, it is a student who has some very unique and complex needs, it's been discussed as part of the IEP. And when that student does have an IEP, the IEP is required to convene within, after the second incident of seclusion and restraint, and review and revise a behavior intervention plan if we need to. So in December, we will be coming forward with a report on the 2021, 22 school year. We will be reporting out on the number of incidents, the number of students involved in those incidents, and the number of students involved in those incidents who were also students who have a disability. And I believe that was kind of my, what I wanted to be able to share in regards to that requirement. But, you know, as we prepare for updates, as we prepare for this particular report, I wanted, I mean, we were looking really for some feedback from you in terms of information that you would like above and beyond this report, or related to the trainees, really focusing on student behavior.
Yep, and you'll recall, it's like we presented first semester, kind of a snapshot of overall behavior and data, and then we drilled into the schools, the high school goes at the next meeting. But then when we look at kind of garnering all the end of your data, just a discussion, and if it's not top of mind right now, reach out in the interim to Emily or myself, so we can build that. We would intend to be presenting holistically as a district and by age level. Like we said, you're familiar now with the terms majors, minors, what those things look like, probably high frequency, high incidence areas, times of day, common consequences, all those pieces to the board. So if there's any other pieces, we would love to connect and take that down, so we can build that presentation.
I guess I'd like to see information broken out by building, obviously, we already do that, but building versus, you know, this happened inside the building, and then I'm thinking for our younger kids, this happened on the playground, or, you know, that type of thing, location. Specifically also what's happening on the buses, so if it happened on the bus versus the playground versus the inside. I'd like to also, and I think this might be helpful for everyone to understand, so I don't know if we can come up with a, and I want to use the word policy, because that's so restrictive, but some kind of baseline is what I'm really looking for to say, I'm going to pick on Joel, because he's sitting next to me. So Joel had four major incidences. At what point then do we say to Joel, hmm, this just isn't working out for us, and it's clearly not working out for you? So what is that number, and is that a grade level situation? So you've had five majors at grade five, guess what, you're going to maybe look for an alternative environment, because maybe this isn't working for you? So I guess something that parents, as well as we as school board members can understand, because obviously we hear a lot of like, oh, kids are behaving so poorly, but if we don't have consequences that everyone understands and can see, we're just going to continue to see that bad behavior mimicked, because, you know, I'm going to say, well, Joel gets away with it, so why wouldn't I try it? I mean, come on, I'm a mom, I've seen that happen, we all have. So I just think that if we could have something that's a little more formalized as a baseline, I understand every case is not the same, and I certainly understand children with different levels and disabilities might have some different situations happening, totally get that, but I'm talking normal kids, walking down the hallway, that kind of stuff. I think the other thing that would be helpful, I think the conversation with teachers about how to de-escalate a situation is critical. And I don't want to know by name, but I would guess there's some teachers who are probably much better at that than others. And so, you know, at what point are you as administrators looking at these teachers to say, I'll pick on Chris now, you know, dear Mr. Swigert, you've had, you know, 72 of these de-escalation issues in the hallway, but yet, you know, Mrs. Schmidt has had two. Why is that happening when your classrooms are right next door to each other? So, you know, I think there's a way that some teachers probably are, you know, more suited to handle those than others, and how are we then doing some advanced training to help these teachers who are struggling in that area?
Yep, absolutely. And you actually brought up, I mean, so many good points, and one of the things I do want to say is, you know, that idea of a rubric or that idea of something that guides decision-making is something we're actively working on. And we're really looking at it, you know, not just from the standpoint of what are student expectations across the developmental range, but what are, what are teachers and administrators and councils, what are our expectations for ourselves in response to? And, you know, that idea of how do we quantify or determine when you intervene differently? You know, if a kid has five majors, well, I always think about the fact that if a student has five majors, they're struggling in our environment, and we hold some responsibility to be intervening with the intention of supporting them in a different path. And we absolutely, I mean, we absolutely serve many kids. In fact, I just did a presentation this morning with one of my student services teams. It might be surprising to know that in this building, we have over 70 kids coming and going who are receiving education differently because of a disciplinary response that we had to, we had to come up with a different plan for, because of unique special education needs, because they're on an alternative path for graduation. But we take those decisions really seriously, and we're always focused on, okay, what do we need to do in terms of building your skills to get you back to where you need to be? Because nine out of 10 times, we really want, and I believe that kids want to be educated with their peers and need to be educated with their peers, but there are situations where we have to do something unique and different. But what you're, what you're asking for, I think, is the exact same thing that is a system we recognize, we really need to kind of reboot and clarify what those expectations are, and what are kind of the decision rules around when we're going to intervene on behalf of kids. And on that kid and all kids.
I'd like to also kind of one-up that. In addition to the consequences, talking about the alternatives, one of the functions of a board, it's probably the worst job you have, is the decision to expel a student. That absolutely comes before the board, we've had multiple cases in the last year. And I think just, you know, as we welcome new team members, but also kind of a good segue, once we do that work, is then a good in-depth board work session. You know, then when X, Y, and Z happened and we're looking at expulsion, you know, what's the above the line, below the line, and doing things like that, so that you know and are confident, like, you're going to see those cases and what happens in those. So I think to schedule that, you know, with the president, of just like another, just, and I would function that as a work group, not a formalized meeting, but where, once you've got that data, once you really dig in, it's, it's really a nice kind of roundtable discussion with the board as around kind of those next steps, because that is something the board does do.
Absolutely. And philosophically, I mean, even when we have to make those really hard decisions that a student's behavior has put them in a position where they're not able to be in a school environment, how do we continue to move forward on behalf of that child? Because I'm going to tell you, the majority of the kids that I've interfaced with this year around those big behaviors, they're between the ages of 10 and 14. You know, and a kid between the ages of 10 and 14 who has made some pretty big errors is still only 10 or 12 years old. And if we move to expulsion, which we've had, we have had to do, what do we do on the other side of that to support them with the intention of building them back into our community at some point in time? And preparing them to be contributing members of our larger community. And I will say, I have appreciated this school board in that regard, because I think when we've had those really hard conversations, this has been a group of individuals who are really looking at kids individually and thinking about what kids need based upon their individual stories.
I like what both, everyone has said so far. I think what Nancy is saying is different than the seclusion and restraint piece.
Absolutely.
Okay, just want to clarify on that.
I actually, I appreciate that, because it is, it's not the same kind of set of information, but the reality is, it's the set of information that comes before we even get to the point where we're talking about potential restrictive interventions. So I think it's really applicable and it gives us some direction in terms of what to bring forward to you for discussion in the future. And it also gives me an idea, as I'm working with teams, and we have all kinds of things in play, really focused on behavior, on how do we think about our school communities from the standpoint of a community of belonging, and increasing that feeling of belonging for students, for families. So it's all interconnected.
I guess that, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I just hope that we see separate reports for that, okay?
Yes.
Just to clarify.
Yep, those are very different board reports.
Okay, so I have a couple part questions, so you can answer them, and I'll ask the next part. So it sounded like you, it's mandatory for certain staff to take this training?
Yes.
And what part, what percentage or what, who's deemed the staff members to take this training?
So all of our special education teachers, all of our special education paraprofessionals, all of our building administrators, and actually, next year, we're looking towards, I really would like to have all of my student services folks trained, so that would include, I mean, right now, I believe all of our school psychologists are trained, most of our counselors. But then we also have that group of people who support us that we call family liaisons. They function in the capacity of building family engagement to community agencies and supporting kind of that wraparound service to kids who need more than what we're providing in the school environment. I really believe they need to be a part of that training as well.
Okay, the second part, do they, does the training include a sort of psych eval for, for the staff members that are taking the training?
So evaluating the psychological.
Not, my, my only thing is, so police officers do the same thing, when they're, when they're looking to be a police officer, not everybody's fit to be a police officer. Are we, are we making sure that we're not putting staff members in a bad position where they're not fit to be a crisis intervention person?
Yeah, so that's a really good question, and my hope would be that we've made that decision at the point of hiring before we've brought those individuals into our, our school community, simply from the standpoint of, even without this training as an educator, you are absolutely going to be put in positions where you have to make hard decisions about interventions that could escalate a scenario with a student or not. So, I mean, I think about for myself as a student services person, I'm really looking at those types of skills and ability and, gosh, what's the word I'm looking for? Kind of that, that, those personality traits that would allow somebody to manage those situations.
I can speak to that a little bit. So when you talk about a formalized psychological evaluation, because some companies do that, we do not do that. Again, you're looking for some pieces during the hiring process, but also, your, your staff aren't working in isolation. When you're responding to a crisis in a building, no different than if I had to go perform CPR, I'm doing an all-call and there's, there's a team that's coming. If you have a student in crisis, there's multiple players, and there's actually one witness in place the entire time, scripting, taking notes, there's, there's someone doing that. If you were talking about a new staff member, as Emily was talking about, we have student services coordinators, it's their job for embedded coaching, in addition to the team who's there, and your administrator, we have veteran administrators who's there, you have a student services professional, so they're not in isolation, as you said, like, well, how do we know when, you know, things are going on, what's, what's really happening? So there's, there's some checks and balances around that piece. And I think to Nancy's point around the data around, okay, who's successful at de-escalating or things of that nature, then, then we'd be making some decisions or some alternate plans. So there's some checks and balances there, to your point.
And that's actually a statutory requirement. You, in the event that you are at that level of restrictiveness, you have to have a second person participate with you. So thank you for bringing that in.
I have nothing to say too. So, well, I'm a parent of a special needs child, and you have an autistic son, so I totally hear you loud and clear on all of these things that sometimes, you know, it is for their safety, like, he goes running into a parking lot, like, yeah, somebody please grab him, you know, so. But I think it would be good in the report to do, like, how many kids do have like an IEP versus kids that don't, because I feel like that really puts it in the perspective that a lot of the kids that do have an IEP, they really are not always in control of themselves, and that's why they're in that situation, so it doesn't make it look like, well, this man's really awful, you know, because they have all these behavior things, if these kids are special needs, it's really... If these kids are special needs, it's really a whole other ballgame. Yeah, so yeah, I feel like that would be good to put in there. And then maybe just like, you know, how many of these episodes are these individual kiddos having, you know? So is there something else that maybe needs to be put into place so that's not happening? Like, you know, doesn't, you know, however many times, but like...
And absolutely. And the other thing I want you to know is, system-wide, and I, obviously, this is my first year in this particular role, but I've been a part of the student services team and have been in the system for a long time. And we've done a really good job as a system in avoiding the overuse of seclusion and restraint. But I will tell you this, in the event that we do have a concern and when we look at our data, we're going to be pretty responsive in terms of how do we support a team or teams of individuals who need more. And that's really kind of what you're saying, Melanie, in terms of if we see a trend in one direction, how do we intervene and make sure that the people who are supporting those students have the tools they need to make that go in the opposite direction? You're correct, most of the time when those restrictive measures are used, they're used on behalf of a student with a disability. But even then, if it's being used, we do need to do better and go back to really think about how do we decrease those opportunities for our children with special needs as well? So. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you for the preview and anticipated report, reports, I should say, the pair of reports. All right. Next, we have our superintendent's report, Superintendent Wimmer.
All right, well, I had to talk about expulsions for a second, but probably one of your favorite jobs as board members and mine is to celebrate in the culmination of someone's educational career. And we got to hand out a lot of diplomas yesterday. So thank you to the board who could represent, but our seniors from East and West participated in their graduation ceremony. Thank you to our community TV services, they livestreamed the event, they've also archived it. So if they want to share with family members, you want to catch that. Our students performed, so we had band, the orchestra, singing, the speeches. It was just amazing. And like, your face hurts from smiling after that day. So congratulations to all of our seniors from East and West for their graduation. Spring sports is coming to an end. We had a lot of students participating in state. They will be recognized at our upcoming meeting, but West Ben West varsity baseball beat Manitowoc 5-1 in the regional finals, so check them out. They're going to be playing Beaver Dam, Oshkosh North tomorrow, 1:00 PM, in the sectionals. And if they win that game, they're going to play again at 4:30 in the sectional finals. And if they sweep those two games, they are onto the state tournament. So everyone, cheer on your West Ben West ballplayers. So it's nice to have a team continuing. Track and field participated in state this weekend, I won't steal anyone's thunder. They were in lacrosse. Again, they'll be at the next board meeting for their formal recognition, but just a special congratulations to Sarah Raymer from West, cheering a spot on the podium by finishing third place in the 400-meter dash, and she has beaten the all-time school record. So it'll be nice to see and recognize her. And we did have a doubles team from East go on, it was Chase Kobo and Owen Schmidt. They competed, they did face a loss, but they had a great showing. So again, just looking forward to bringing our spring athletes in. We talked about summer school, the report that the curriculum committee received, just a reminder, summer school session one begins, it's right around the corner, on June 13th. There's a lot of fun. I think sometimes kids think, oh, that's if I struggle with, you know, reading or math, I have to go to summer school. That's not the case with West Ben Summer School. There's a ton of enrichment and fun opportunities, so check it out, kindergarten through eighth grade. There's also different standards classes, if you do need help in those areas. And for our high school students, they can get credit, credit recovery, or they can preemptively take a few classes. So we also have, as Tony was saying, jump start events. As they're transitioning, there's music camps for students starting in grade five. So just some really neat opportunities. Our classes will be held at Decorah, Green Tree, Silverbrook, and the high school. Spoke about kind of staggered start, there's also some transportation hubs. Our class schedules have been sent out, so if you're hearing this report and you think you signed up but didn't get a schedule, please circle back. Or if you're thinking now, now that summer's finally here and every kid looked at you today on a rainy day on their first day of summer vacation and went, I'm bored, give us a call, we can help you with that too. And then, we've been hearing a lot of Head Start. Recall that we're one of the few districts that does manage its own Head Start, so Jamie Nelson is the coordinator of that. So one of the next pieces, no different than we had to do a budget amendment for our district budget, the Head Start team will be back to have you formalize that. So it'll be upcoming at our next meeting for action, but I just wanted to detail a little bit, as they close out that fiscal year, same, June 30th for them, the Head Start program will close out their activities for their year, meeting federal guidelines. So one of the topics related to that for our June 20th meeting is their internal budget revisions for use specifically of the American Rescue Plan or AARP funds for the fiscal year. So the board previously reviewed, approved the budget for Head Start funds, you recall that, and the administration is going to propose to reallocate some of the approved funds within that AARP program. Those recommendations are made based on the adjustments that they can now do because of the board-approved Training Technical Assistance Plan, as well as the review of the recently completed Community Self-Assessment. So that requested approval will come forth for board on the 20th. We'll make sure and get you some information prior to that, but it doesn't call for any increased spending, just simply asks that the administration be allowed to move those funds to prioritize areas due to other funding sources that we've heard about coming in. So those will allow them to use the dollars for various funding sources in the most efficient manner. So just an item that's coming forward too, so we want to make sure and build a little background knowledge. That's all.
Any questions for Superintendent Wimmer? All right. Hearing none, we'll move to our series of discussion items. And first is our Human Growth and Development Advisory Committee update. And Laura Jackson, our Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning, will walk us through that. And Laura is joining us via phone tonight. So Laura, are you still with us?
I am with you all.
Great.
And I want to thank the members of the committee that are present, they're going to come up to the podium. And while the PowerPoint is being displayed and they're coming up, I just want to review that earlier this spring, the district had sought volunteers to participate in the review of the Human Growth and Development curriculum. And this group would be an advisory committee and they were appointed by the school board. So once the school board appointed the advisory committee members, the team began to meet. And presenting, as a result of the work of the full team presenting recommendations tonight, we have Jody Eman, Tom Holcaster, Kate McCall, and Jenny Thompson. And I am just going to briefly review a few components before the team begins the presentation. So if you recall, the purpose of the committee was to review the current Human Growth and Development curriculum and provide feedback to the district on them. The committee included parents of students in the district, members of the clergy from local parishes, community members and healthcare professionals, as well as district staff. Additionally, teachers of the curriculum and the school counselor were part of the meetings as well. And I really have to express my gratitude to all the members of the committee. They gave their time during the meetings and time preparing in between meetings, and this allowed for us to have some really focused and targeted discussions and some productive discourse. The committee was diverse in perspective and they came to consensus on the recommendations that you will see. But first and foremost, they kept our students as the center of the discussion and what our students need in order to be prepared for their future. Again, the committee members came, following the three pre-planned meetings of the committee, a small group came together to formalize the presentation that you see tonight. And again, we have four members of this group to share the details of the presentation and recommendation. Are we now on the slide of state goals?
Yes.
Yes. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So again, I just wanted to briefly review the goals of the Human Growth and Development Advisory Committee. Again, they looked at the fourth grade lessons where, that specifically addressed Human Growth and Development, the fifth grade lessons, and the unit within the Health and Wellness course. The Health and Wellness course is taught between eighth grade and 12th grade. Students have the option of when they want to take that course. It is a half-credit and it is a graduation requirement. So the goal of this review was to provide the feedback and then for the district to act on that, whether it is to consider it, to reject it, or to implement it. And this committee previously reported to the curriculum committee. They reviewed the materials and the learning goals relative to the standards and grade level outcomes, the instructional resources, and then the compliance with the requirements that are outlined in the state statute. So the committee recommendations are organized into different categories. The committee will present these to you now. They will first share overall recommendations. These are some things that apply to all grade levels where Human Growth and Development is taught. They also have specific recommendations for the fourth and fifth grade years where there are specific lessons about how your body changes. And they have recommendations for instruction in the Health and Wellness class that's taught grades eight through 12. Finally, at the end, there are some additional recommendations that are not really about the curriculum, but they are items that support the curriculum or support parents. And so now our committee members will begin presenting, and Kate McCall is the first member of our committee to share some of the recommendations.
Okay, so first up, we would like to be able to revise the medical information in the curriculum now and more frequently. Some of the statistics on the slides are out of date, and we would like to be able to use more countywide information from the health department so that we have something more relevant for our students, because it's the community that they live in. So that would make it much more relevant and then, you know, just more useful. We would like to establish a process to then update the statistics every three years. We would like to be able to establish a process to update the statistics every three years so that we can maintain their in-dateness and relevance for students. We would like to revise the language used in the curriculum to be biologically based, so that the egg comes from a female and sperm comes from the male. Some of the slides, the way it's worded now, the egg is coming from the mother and the sperm is coming from the father and just, I mean, that's how it is. But the biological language seems to be a much better fit for this kind of curriculum. We would also like the language to be inclusive because not all children reside with biological families, so it would include caregivers, adoptive parents, guardians, a little more in some of that language. We would like more data on the most common forms of birth control that are also being reviewed more frequently, that was a little bit farther up. And then, we would like to be able to provide a more clear and specific list of trustworthy resources so that students know where they can get good information, teachers, parents, but also maybe some like books and resources like that. We would like to provide some clearly scripted information on making health decisions, just so that it's a little more clear and not murky. We'd like to revise outdated images and language and references in some of the slides and videos. Students engage more when you're not telling them about pagers. And not that that's an example, but just that kind of like making sure it's updated and relevant so that it just clicks better. We would like to include in the curriculum some resources on knowing where you can get menstrual products in school. And we would like to provide a list of resources and information that gets shared with students to parents and guardians regarding contraception, just so that everybody's in the loop about what we're telling our students.
So one of the things that we found when we started doing the research and whatever so we could have the discussions was that we were getting parts of what we needed, but we were asked to respond to a lot of questions that it seemed like we didn't have information. So the more we delved into this, we realized or discovered that it was because some of the stuff was not all only taught in the three-day program that the kids are getting, that they're actually getting it maybe in counselor connection, they might be getting it in like their other health classes or physical education and stuff. But in order to follow the state statute, so that when a parent wants to know what are their kids learning in the HGD program and health things, we're supposed to be able to provide the complete instruction to them. So we decided that we need to make sure that we map everything out. So it's, so parents and teachers and everybody know that, oh, they're going to get this in this class. And sometimes they're getting it more than once, which is really good. If it's on things like body image and that, having it, you know, for 15 minutes in one of your three-day classes isn't probably going to be enough if you can get it again in some of the other places. So we probably want everyone to be able to find that map. And eventually, too, we're trying to make it so that when you go to the website, even going to the website right now, it's very minimal information there. And we want to make it so that you'll be able to go to health and then you'll see underneath there different categories of the HGD and all the other different topics that would fall underneath there in one place, so people know where to go for that. And then, again, we want to make sure that we're increasing the review of the materials every three years because I think we are finding that some of our stuff was coming from like maybe even 20 years ago. And not that all of it changes that much, but there are changes and so we want to make sure that we're keeping up to date. And so, doing a review every three years would be, would help us with that. Jenny's turn.
Okay, so we want to create a procedure and timeline for root, nope, that's not it. Let's see, make sure areas that reference trusted adults specify parents, guardians, as well as teachers, trusted relatives, caregivers, and healthcare providers. And when the unit discusses medical decisions, note that the parent, guardian, medical care provider has the best information for you on these topics. The committee felt that the information was not taught frequently enough. So in addition, we would like to maybe see courses added. There are lots of different options to be considered. The district health curriculum team should review the options and course development. The committee identified key gaps in timing of the instruction between fifth and eighth and then after eighth, depending on when the students meet the current course requirements. The committee would recommend abstinence, birth control, and contraception should be discussed at an earlier age than it currently is introduced. And that would be going along with adding another class. So something that we noticed is that it's possible that a student could complete Human Growth and Development in fifth grade and then wait to take health class until 12th. So that's a really big gap, and we saw that as an issue. With 75% of students taking health in eighth grade, they do not have, they do not have a required health class in high school, which means their health instruction is complete at 14 years old, which seems very scary. We want to encourage speaking to a trusted adult about menstruation without emphasis of it having to be a female. And the parent letter should note that the medical professionals participate in lessons because I think a lot of us found that we, I either didn't remember that that happened when our, like, when my kids went through it and a lot of people didn't know that happened, period, still. And we thought it was an awesome thing and we should absolutely have, you know, let parents know that that's happening. And I think it'll make some people too feel a little better about what's being taught, just feel safe about it being taught. Just feel safe about it being taught.
Hello, a lot of the stuff that I have on this slide is basically talking about updating information. The first one is just enhancing instruction on how to manage risk situation refusal skills with the use of technology nowadays. A lot of things are taken care of or they think are taken care of over media. And there's a lot of different misconceptions that are coming through with what is appropriate versus not appropriate and things like that. So that's why we have the next slide or the next one says media-wise. A lot of people do put things out in the media and they don't understand the consequences that come from it. So get them more education on that. The next one is just talking about continuing talking about the biggest cancers that males and females do have to be worried about because of the reproductive organs that they do have. Next is talking about consequences. A lot of times we do discuss some of the things in class, but we don't really have proper information about the consequences that some students may get from decisions that they do make. So it says include instruction on how drugs and alcohol can negatively impact decision-making, how when your mind is altered, is that consent versus not consent and things like that. So get more information on that. Include information on negative influence on pornography. And enhance instruction on counseling medical legal resources for sexual abuse and rape victims. Just give more information about what to do in case anyone was in the situation, but also get medical background as well. We do give some information about certain things such as complications during pregnancies or SDIs or anything like that. They go deeper into that as to how they can protect themselves even more. And then the next one talks about enhancing instruction on sexual abuse, sexual assault and rape. Again, bringing somebody in from the outside like our police liaison officers or anything like that. Talk about possible consequences that could come from not wise choices. Enhance instruction on sex offender registration. Again, something that we could bring from outside communities. And instruction on the process of relinquishing a newborn needs to be added to the curriculum. We did that this year in the eighth grade curriculum and the high school curriculum. It was just enacted that we do need to talk about. It's called the safe haven law, but it's another option for somebody who may not be ready to be a parent yet.
One thing I wanted to clarify for anybody that might be watching is because sometimes it's not always easy to read the slides and they're not getting these handouts, is that in fourth and fifth grade, we're not talking, we're only talking about like puberty changes and things like that. We're not talking anything about sex or abstinence or anything. Like none of those words are there. And that's why if they're waiting even until, you know, 12th grade or something to get some of this stuff, it means they didn't have any discussion or talk on any of the things that like Tom and the others were speaking about. So I just want to make that clear because not everybody can see where it says like eight to 12 and stuff when we're talking about this stuff. This slide summarizes some additional areas the committee felt the district could provide clear access to information for parents on the human growth and development curriculum. The information regarding human growth and curriculum and opt-out process should be easily accessible on the website, including the parent, sample parent letters and things like that. We're also, I suppose, I think this is a different point, but one of the things that we're going to be also doing is sending home questions that might come up in the classroom. Sometimes there's things that the kids might come up with that, let's say you're in fourth and fifth grade. We're not ready to be teaching those things at that age. So the teachers can send those off to the parents and say, these are some of the questions that came up in the class. They don't have to say which student it was because some of those students might not be asking the parents because they don't know how to ask the parents. So this way it keeps them anonymous, but the parents can see that these are the things that are coming up. And if it's something they want to discuss with their child when at home at an earlier age and stuff, they can. Sometimes what we're trying to do in the health and development is to stick to facts and medical information and keep the values part out because every family might have different values that go with the different health topics that come up. And so when value things come up, that might be another types of questions that get forwarded to parents where they might say, these are some of the other questions that came up. And then parents can decide how they want to teach that part of it to the kids. And that helps to create some healthy discussions at home because a lot of times parents don't know, you know, where to begin with these types of discussions. And I think that's about all I have to talk about.
So this kind of goes back to updated data. One of the ways that we get that data is when the health department puts out their risk behavior survey. That's one of the sources of data on our more local community that we would like to be able to use in this curriculum. So we're asking if when the survey is approved by the board, that if that could get shared with parents to look at it before it got administered. And when that's presented, we'd like to know how and when it would be used. And not only would the data collected in the survey be useful for in the curriculum, it's definitely useful for the committee and the advisory committee when we're looking at the curriculum, like where are areas we might need to focus more on because this is a local thing that we should really address. So really, the more data we can get from surveys like that, the better. We really feel like we can serve our students.
All right, thank you very much to all of the committee members presenting today. At this time, I'm actually going to step back from the meeting, but I would invite the board members to bring forward any questions. The educators who are our health educators will be getting together to review these recommendations and talk, discuss, and plan for how they could be implemented and then share that with the curriculum committee before it comes to the board again. Again, I would like to thank Jenny, Jody, Kate, and Tom for coming to present tonight and the entire committee for all of the work they put in to reviewing the curriculum.
Great, well, thank you. And first, from my perspective, thanks from the board because obviously this took a lot of time and energy and effort. We really appreciate the fact of all these diverse viewpoints being brought to us. We benefit from that. So thank you for that. Obviously, we'll see this at a future meeting. To me, these all look very, very reasonable and advisable. We'll have the benefit of being able to take a look at this over the next several weeks or however long it takes, Superintendent Wimmer.
Sure, well, probably a little bit longer than a few weeks. There's a lot of sound recommendations. But just to reiterate, kind of process-wise, those teams will review the recommendations, get together all the work, all those pieces. That'll come back to the curriculum committee for continuous update. What's the progress of that work? How's it going? And then approval with them and then coming forward to the board. So they'll kind of oversee and make sure that that continues to make progress on the recommendations. So just making sure that everyone understands the process. So it's not like, hey, this committee made some recommendations and they start next week. There's a lot of work. And then the committees will go through that. So thank you.
Other questions or comments from the board?
I just wanted to make a comment that I thought it was really great that we did this committee and it was really good to get perspective from all different community members with different backgrounds and to kind of hash out some of the stuff ahead of time so that when it does come before the board, there isn't so much, you know, just...
Thanks.
Yeah, much smoother process. And like it would be really nice if we could do this with other, you know, curriculum things as they come up too, you know, just to get the perspective of all the different members of the community so that it's not that so stressful at those meetings and that hasn't been out before them first.
Right, thank you.
Thank you all for your time and not just tonight, but all the other committee meetings. And I really appreciate it. The youth risk behavior survey, Superintendent, is that done every year, every three years? I can't remember.
Yep, with kind of COVID and ins and outs, we no one went forward on that from the county this year. We said we need to take a pause. So what'll happen is because it asks about behaviors, when they finalize that, sometimes they might test some new questions that actually per our policy comes before the board. We review that survey and then we have what we would call active consent for parents where we disclose, here's the survey, here's the contents. Please let us know that your child can participate before we move forward on that. But they use that, like you said, not just using it for that information, but the county, their health department, multiple service agencies use that so that they can set their kind of their own benchmarks and what they need to do too. So yeah, we'll look forward to kind of seeing that again. And again, that's given by the state, so I haven't received next year's survey information at this time, but that'll come forward.
Again, thank you very much.
Any other questions, comments? Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming tonight. All right, we'll move to our next discussion item then, which is federal funds and master three allocation use and stakeholder. And Mr. Andy Sarno will walk us through that item. Good evening, Mr. Sarno.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity tonight. Have some objectives at this meeting where some districts conducted this step in our federal process that's considered ESSR. So it's the elementary and secondary school emergency refunds. There's three different components of this. Some districts came forward a year ago. I would like to point out, and I have some of the timelines. It's helpful because just within the last month, even since we took action on the revised board in the last meeting, our final allocations have been set. So my goals for this evening are make sure that we're sharing the information on these federal dollars and establish a common understanding of these three different buckets of money. I hope that we share the who, what, where, why, and obviously the when because that will impact as we're looking at the year we're wrapping up now and next year's financial budget, on the impact of our student learning as some pieces are carved out for instructional components. Additionally, I want to make sure that we request feedback from the school board at this point in time. We have a draft survey that's a part of the ESSR three dollars. But I hope to, whether that's handing you a printed copy, scribbling, getting in touch with me over the next couple of weeks. This is a requirement. We'd like to release this in the near future. Incorporate that feedback into the budgeting process with our instructional groups, or even with our facilities group, just our cabinet and leadership in general. Our next steps that we have, incorporate all of that feedback, whether it's from you on discussion this evening or then from the survey. Incorporate that into the budget process. Have that be a step. Make sure that we're bringing that forward. I brought that forward. I need to click and we'll present there. Thank you, Superintendent Wimmer. Can we figure it out? Steve, thank you. Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate it. We have just some of the descriptors here with the three buckets of money. Our final allocations, we did share the first round of money with our private school partners, those that signed up for that. The dates, when did it start, when did it stop? Some of the requirements, which some of them did have a couple of requirements. A couple of them are fairly used with the ability to use. I have some of the links with our website that we've established. All this information will be on our website embedded in there as well. I have each of the Department of Public Instruction websites for ESSR one, which was commonly known as CARES, ESSR two, ESSR three. The Department of Public Instruction gave an overview similar to what we're doing of all three of these funds. And then as well, just at the end, some of the use of the monies planned at this point in time as well as just sharing a little bit of that financial impact that will then go into that next agenda item as we're looking at next year's primary budget. So let's start at the top and just talk about these a little bit here. So CARES is what we commonly call the first round of ESSR number one. $427,000 of district money started right away, March of '20, ends September of '22. So coming up here just after the end of this current fiscal year, we could, if we had remaining dollars, use just that little bit from July 1st. But we did share, there's about $70,000, $71,000. That was a part of the parochial schools that were within our geographic boundaries. So Kettle, Marine, Lutheran, within our boundaries, some of the other private schools that are there. The spending was open, however, there's a focus on either get back face-to-face or maintain your face-to-face instruction. That was kind of the goal behind that. And we're not allowing for some of the flexibility with technology and internet connections for some of those virtual instructions. So as we look at that, how we spent that already through last fiscal years as well as the year that we're just wrapping up, there's just a lot of mitigation, cleaning supplies, custodial cleaning time. We actually added some cleaners, virtual and internet connections, and even some hardware related to the instruction and then just some learning materials. So again, trying to make sure that we did maintain that face-to-face instruction, which we did the whole time, minus a couple of mental days. It's anticipated that we'll use these dollars between last year as well as this year. It'd be done with that as a change period. ESSR two, $1.8 million. This was district dollars for the duration. We had an original, almost $1.3 million of our initial allocation. However, because we were face-to-face, there was a measurement period, which we did very well in comparison to some of the other districts that were in that bucket of additional dollars. So a total of $3.1 million, again, because we were face-to-face. It started January, do I have that? Yeah. We just received the final allocation as January 6th. So I made that yellow because again, didn't even have that final dollar amount until right around Christmas. But it started in March of '20. It goes until September of '23. So that's interesting. We are using some of these dollars, anticipated to use them this year for balancing the budget. I will share that again in a few moments. It's anticipated that we would use the remainder in next year's budget. There are no special requirements. It's fairly open. Again, how are we addressing instruction, our students' needs, mental health? But just about virtually anything that we would expense. John, I hope it's okay that I share this. We were talking about an area of specificity. But right after each one of these, there are certain milestones or there might be an article in the newspaper. And right after that, we would see an influx of, hey, did you know that you could spend these dollars on HVAC and put a germ-killing light device in your HVAC? Or did you know that you could use these dollars for safety and security? Or for learning, or materials, or for services with virtual instruction? Yes, those are special interests. People selling things. So they've done a good job in trying to get out and market that. But this ESSR two, this approximately $3 million, is fairly wide open at this point in time. Or not at this point in time, the entire duration. How we've spent it to date through this year and even looking at next year. Health room staffing, additional custodial cleaning time is continued, additional staff, including English Language Arts, elementary math, intermediate and middle school classroom instruction, high school English Language Arts, as well as math. As well, this year, we're using it for balancing the budget. Next year, we'll be using it for balancing the budget. And remember, I have that green on the bottom of this document. This year as well as next year is part of the state annual budget. There was no increase in the revenue limit. We were told fairly openly, use those federal dollars for however you need them and we're using those to balance the budget.
Just real quick, you might get to this. So $3.1 million just for ESSR two, what percentage estimate is going into beyond June, beyond this fiscal year?
I believe, and if you let me get within about $100,000, I think we're using about $800,000 of that $3.1 million. $800,000 of that 3.1 million this year to balance the budget. So the remainder of the balance, approximately $2.3 million would carry forward for next year.
Okay, so in the health room staffing and others, that's part of the budget, so all in, we're doing 2.3 to next year. Okay?
Again, DPI information is all linked on here as well as open field. ESSER three, so at this point in time, and it's possible, we could still utilize these dollars. And I say that because as a part of the budgeting process, both through the survey as well as through this, the survey is a piece of it. There's also a requirement, and I'm jumping ahead just a little bit, but there's a 20% requirement, which translates to what, $850,000, towards evidence-based intervention services, meaning specifically for addressing students with needs, instructional needs, get them caught up, make sure they're a grade level, make sure they're on target for graduation, a lot of those milestones. So I know, I believe that we are spending some of this year's monies on EBIS, evidence-based instructional services. Next year, just making sure that we're hitting that target. But again, as we're taking a look at approximately $4 million, we received an additional $189,000 just about three weeks ago was the final determination of these, this allocation. Well, we could have started spending this last May, it goes through September of '24. My belief at this point in time is that we'll fully utilize these dollars next year to balance the budget. We need to do a stakeholder survey, that's a requirement. We just talked about the 20% of the $850,000 for student learning, and how we're looking at that as learning enhancement, mental health, and balance budget.
Can you comment just generally, you know, the idea of using this money to balance the budget? I'm just curious. So are any districts, or are other districts in Wisconsin, what would be a common practice? Not to say that what they do is what we should do, but is this unusual?
This has become more common. In fact, as I met last summer, at this point in time, many districts didn't believe they were going to be needing that. And as the summer progressed, and as final information came through, districts identified their needs to go into the current school year last fall, it became more prevalent. So it's fairly common for that to happen. Some districts are taking different stances. And one of the important pieces is again, we're a low-spending district, we're at that low-spending threshold. Comparing us to another district, our revenue limit at $10,000 and a few pennies compared to a district with a revenue limit of $12,000 or $13,000, it's a little bit different. So we're not alone in Washington County. We do have some low-spending districts. Some of our neighboring districts are in that same boat, but we're not alone. And that's been progressively, I was just at a virtual meeting on Friday with colleagues. And again, as they're looking at next school year, there's a growing belief based on the CPI, health insurance trends, that districts will be more and more using these dollars to balance.
I think what would be interesting to your point, everyone's kind of at that point of understanding what their allocation was, and stepping forward to do the stakeholder engagement, even though each district is a little bit different nuance, it'll be interesting to see the different results from those surveys, to give you that perspective.
Thank you.
Maybe one more question regarding that. See, reading maybe through, reading the state, what they're doing here, and if I'm wrong in this assumption, right, the state budget has surplus. But our K-12 allocation is going down because enrollment going down. But in general, the allocations to school districts are not going up dramatically. Seems like they're holding back, kind of with a link to say, use these federal funds to balance your budget. And I could be, I'm just assuming, they're putting pressure maybe on school districts to balance their budgets, right? We want to do that. But maybe they're not giving much money increases with inflation going up, our payrolls going up. So I don't know, just comment on it just.
Yeah, that's accurate. And that's what we're monitoring, how does this impact us? How are we even wrapping up the current year? There's some things that are not finalized until the middle of July, right before the auditors arrive. We receive, we're self-funded health insurance. So we receive something called an ID in our report here, but I received that we make adjustments to balance everything out for the year based on our premiums collected between the district and the employees versus our losses, which are really our paid claims. So there's some things like that, that this is even still up in the air based on how we end this year. We're trying to anticipate that, monitor that closely, make sure that we're accurate with that revised budget that was discussed and acted upon at the last couple of meetings. So yeah, that's the arena that we're in.
Okay.
Thank you. I have some printed copies. If anybody wants to be old school, you're welcome to grab one. Again, feel free to scribble on it and get back to me. But maybe Superintendent Lumber, if I'm not overstepping, if you can give permission from that far away, maybe we could just ask for permission either on June 20th at the next board meeting, when I would bring forward the next agenda item for action.
Want me to go through the survey a little bit?
Yeah, oh, yes, absolutely. Would anybody like a copy of? No, okay, all right. It's out there, it's, I don't, oh, I'm sorry.
I'll take that, but I just was gonna ask if you can just explain the survey?
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, as far as why you have to do it?
Yep. So this is the survey, and again, it has an attachment to this agenda item, but this is a requirement of the ESSER three, this final round of dollars. It's a requirement.
Are there's leftover money? Or why?
This is just a requirement, as a part of the approval process where the federal government gave our state. All states, if you Google ESSER three engagement survey, you will get hits from California to Maine. Every district was expected to do this just as a part of receiving these dollars. And so every state made sure that this was a piece of it. We indicated to the state with our report that you would be doing it. So it's just a part of the process.
Did you create this, or did this hold from the state?
We borrowed it, Superintendent Lumber, I tweaked it.
So we can tweak it locally?
Absolutely. Yep. It should meet our needs and our objectives to solicit the information that we like. So email, and we jump over.
So tab right next to it. So as we said, we wanted to honor that there's some elements of ownership. We've asked all the required pieces. We would do a full-scale launch with our community. We would take it to, we're in multiple groups, I'm sitting chambers, make sure we're structuring business. So the first piece, and it's not launched, you're looking at a hard copy, in case we wanted to follow up with any constituents, asking for email. But it's asking around, one of the pieces is to engage variety stakeholders. I can't just go ask all the teachers. I can't just ask my board members and say, yep, I engaged people. It's really hitting on, so that's your different roles. So again, it could be a business owner, it could be someone who just works in the community, a parent, a real variety. So it's getting on that. We think we've kind of covered those and made some space for other. And then the representation. So yeah, this is kind of how you identify your role in the community. Are there certain groups? Because they're asking us to make sure, again, representation that we've engaged with, you know, families or service agencies who serve children with disabilities in those different areas. So again, these are the pieces that we've utilized from state samples, et cetera. And then looking at helping refine what our priority area is for us in using that. So making sure that people have opportunities to select more than one, talking about delivering that balanced budget without reducing anything that we currently offer. And there's other lists there. And then there's a specific, as Andy was saying, around the 20%, and it being targeted towards academic learning loss. So we've given some opportunities there. And then any additional options, just kind of an open forum for people to provide feedback. So again, you know, if you can just take some time to digest it, just an open call to the community, anyone who's seeing this and looking, if you want to, feel free to email me to give me some feedback on that. We're happy to collect that. Just looking at the survey itself, what might we be missing? But again, some open opportunities for people to express opinions. Then we would synthesize that data and bring it forward. And Andy's done a great job with communications in building out a webpage that, not just with the spreadsheet, gives that information around, so what are all these funds and how are you using them? And a little bit more plain language on the website to be board-facing. And it just says, you know, survey's coming soon. So this is kind of that development phase for it. So if you want to take a look at those pieces and provide feedback, we'd appreciate it.
Questions? I think you're numb. And in two weeks, we... Consider this as an action item, correct?
Thank you.
All right?
Great. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Absolutely. All right. So are we on then to the preliminary budget for the '22, '23 schedule?
We are. I'm gonna hang up for a few more minutes. Looking at the preliminary budget, full disclosure, we still have a lot of assumptions. We're using estimates, we're still hiring people, we're still at a meeting later on this week with our insurance company for the liability and some of those things. So we're still working through this, but at the same time, at this point in the year, we ask for your discussion and input, as well as then hopefully in two weeks, we can bring forward a document. Any discussion at this point in time will be brought forward, but still hit some of those targets of balanced budget, make sure that we're maintaining and keeping in mind that mill rate and levy, which is discussed in September. We have that date set now, and as well then for formal approval in October. But between now and then, begin incurring expenditures with those staff that are hired, some of the services and some of the staff, consumables and some of those pieces where July 1st comes fairly soon, and just making sure that we have preliminary budget, that we've gone through that stuff. So this is for discussion this evening. I walked through a month ago, a fairly similar process with that revised budget. So just so we understand why we're coming forward. So as a part of the budget timeline in blue, we have that May-June preliminary budget discussion and approval. So just those two evening meetings. Our September 26th annual meeting will be here before we know it, as well as October 24th is the actual date when we would be bringing forward the final budget. Just got done here last month with an amended budget, which is we done in the spring, and then the audit. So it's a full cycle. It's about a two-year process between the 12 months of our fiscal year, the planning that goes into it, the wrap-up of the audit. This is just a snapshot of the Department of Public Instruction website, talks about that step number one, which is development of the preliminary budget. So that link will actually take you through and just walk you into kind of why we're doing that. So I just wanted to put that out there. This isn't something that we do in West Bend. It's very common. It's universal across all school districts that takes this step. Again, a screenshot off the Department of Public Instruction website. This is a much less formal process. If you recall from the amended budget, one of those is a class one notice that has to be published. There's a document that I brought forward, it was in last Friday's newspaper. That doesn't, where it still takes your action, this piece, we don't have to publish this component. We want to make sure that we're maintaining communication, trust with taxpayers and stakeholders, that we're looking at making sure that we're identifying the levy and the mill rate, showing that balanced budget that I spoke about earlier. And then as well, one of the big pieces is just to make sure that we have that authority to begin incurring expenses as well as receiving revenues, which takes place as well. Between now and October, we'll make sure that we monitor enrollment, take a look at staffing, any instructional delivery, even with that virtual component that we've grown the last couple of years, which is projected to continue into next year. Facilities projects are well underway during the summer months. Technology, and those are the two departments that came to you back in January for approval with their projects. Curriculum, professional development opportunities, as well as just making sure that we maintain a level of patience as new information comes, because we've got some dates identified, and incorporating that into the final budget, both in September as well as September.
Just a question, the staffing, when you mentioned we're hiring, something like I mentioned, when you mentioned we're hiring, I just want to put in context, right, with declining enrollment, we reduced, I believe it was seven full-time equivalent teachers across the district, and we were fortunate to do that with kind of attrition, retirements. When we talk about hiring in the consent agenda today, I think there was four additional retirements. That was between a window when we had to offer contracts to our staff and June 30th, or whenever they resigned. So I just want to put that in context that we're hiring to replace recent resignations and other staff at the district. We're not creating new positions, is my question.
The term that we've been using now for a while is rightsizing the district. So our declining enrollment has taken place over the last several years. It's projected to take place for the next several. We'll make sure that we monitor the class sizes at all the grade levels, all the schools. We need to be efficient. Again, low-spending district, in monitoring, how can we get creative with our staffing, making sure that our students have a standardized, Mr. Hans was here, I'm sure he'd jump in and help me out of the way.
No, just recall, I think it's a good point, when you say we're hiring, that could feed the perception that we're adding staff in some way. We're not. We certainly reduced. Those are the components that we bring forward as part of that process. You have a preliminary staffing plan, those pieces, so you could finally see some of those reductions occurring in a manner, as you said, we're, you know, taking care of it through attrition, you know, class size. We didn't arbitrarily inflate our class size or do something like that. So I think they're good points to reiterate to our community.
Great, thanks.
Thank you. There are some additional things between now. We have an actuarial study for our post-employment benefits, developing curriculum, taking a look at technology against some of the areas that I just reiterated. One of the big pieces this year is that incorporating that ESSER between the feedback, the budget, how we're bringing that forward, making sure that we still maintain that balanced budget. But it's anticipated, again, based on any feedback or discussion that you have here between now and the next two weeks, that we'd be asking for approval of the preliminary budget for the next school year. Non-binding in a sense, not super formal, but yeah. I don't need to go over, and there's a document, a second attachment, and again, it's a fairly consistent format that I've been using. You just saw it the last couple of weeks with the revised budget. I'd be happy to go over it. But again, balanced budget, watching for the use of federal dollars, making sure that we're not creating a cliff, monitoring the levy, monitoring the mill rate, but anticipating the federal head start grant, I have that final allocation incorporated. But anticipating with next year's food service and what we might be looking at with expected meals and participation and all of that. So we have, based on our history, as well as our Baird Forecast model, which we've utilized, and bringing those two different triangulations together in what's being brought forward as a recommendation at this time for discussion.
So I'm assuming that as every day goes by, every week goes by, and you know a little bit more. So it's possible we'll see in two weeks, maybe tweaked from this? Or do you think this will, this will be what we will see in two weeks?
I will bring, great question, thank you. I will bring, unless there's something large that changes between now and then, I would be bringing this forward, just for consistency purposes, whether there's a resignation, a higher of aid, and its minimal impact. So unless there's anything large, I would bring that forward and note that if something was large enough to change, but it's anticipated that this would be brought forward.
Just for our public, when you look at that, it's a secondary document we've presented before in Board Docs. But in case you're wondering, it comes in a little bit sideways. So on the upper right, there's an arrow. Tap that a couple of times, it'll spin it the right way for you. So just making sure the public understands. If you just reorient, you can see that.
Yeah, there's, you almost have to view it, click on your view, and yeah, then it'll, I apologize. Scan it about five different times.
That's okay.
John?
Yeah, so for the survey, I guess I'm just trying to wonder, I'm just curious on what we're, how much we're using for this. Like, because I'm assuming this is kind of like, how do you want to spend the money? Like, because I'm assuming this is kind of like, how do you want to spend the money? But you're talking about balancing budgets, so is this really going to be taken into effect?
We have enough time, and there's enough flexibility that if we see an area of emphasis that we need to make sure we hit, even as final grades have come out and we're looking at summer school, or there might need to be either some remediation or other areas of instructional impact, we still have enough time to be able to prioritize.
But then it would take away from the balanced budget.
We would not. Well, we would make sure that we do, much like every year. And I think I've talked about the SOB late in the past, and it's a silly term. But expenses, generally speaking, go up faster than our revenues just about every year for the last 20 to 30 years. And we balance the budget by making sure that we prioritize. So what we would do is, as a part of the final budget process between now and September, where there may be an area of focus that surfaces here, we would prioritize differently, hit that up and make sure that we, something else is minimized.
I just wasn't, I wasn't sure if we had like a specific amount that you had, that you were asking engagement for?
You bring up a really good point, Mr. Allison, that the survey mechanism is for feedback, that those opinions, thoughts just come back to the board. It shouldn't be perceived as a vote of some kind, that this is how people are saying allocate. It all comes back in feedback format to the board. The board are the ultimate decision-makers and represent our community in that. Great point, though.
The board could also balance the budget by utilizing fund balance, which I am not a fan of. And the fund balance is healthy. The proposed budget doesn't do that. But we are certainly getting a good chunk of federal dollars that we won't be getting forever. So I don't know if, you know, we certainly need to scrutinize the budget. But boy, do we need to be prepared for future years where this money is not coming.
We need to be very mindful, because this one-time money, and it's not continuing, creates a potential cliff. And so that's a great point, because over these two current years, between this year we're wrapping up and next year, if it would have been a typical year, just round numbers, potentially we would have seen a $300 increase this year and next year. So that following year, which would be '23-'24, unless there's a $900 increase, that would just maintain a flat level of funding over the course of this entire period, because we're living on these one-time dollars. Great, great.
Your preliminary budget is showing an increase in salaries and benefits, part of what we're seeing in the world today with inflation on damn near everything. Would you say that you have been somewhat conservative in your approach in putting some of these numbers in? Or when it times, when the time comes to finalize this budget, is there a chance we could be really caught off guard in a certain area?
Trying to make sure that we're conservative in a sense, that we don't have those surprises. So try to minimize that, and we'll work through that. Again, there's enough time to be able to monitor that. So I'm really gonna try to get aggressive this year with actually getting things into Skyward, our financial software, be able to run reports, massage that, and be able to look at real data, even more so than prior years, to make sure that we're able to stand out there.
Superintendent, and assistant superintendent, is there anything out there that you can think of that we could do this summer to save $3 million, let's just say? You know, a lot of people talk about rightsizing the district. Maybe we should close a building, maybe we should close an elementary school, or maybe we should close this building and move the staff across the street to Silverbrook or to the high school, or whatever. Is it, is it, is there any?
So that's, that is some of the tough work ahead when we talk about that. So Dave, recall, I did a preliminary update for the board around, hey, yep, COVID was on the forefront, but we've been privately doing a lot of work reassessing all of our systems. We talked openly around kind of convening around facilities, as you said, summer. I think when I look at it and assess it, there was some previous conversation around closing schools. We can be nested in a school, as can our 4K. These two properties have.
We, just to clarify, we meaning your administration team.
Yeah, so that, when we look at that and think, can I have space for a couple of classrooms of 4K somewhere? Can I put our operations nested in another building that has space? That's the analysis that we've been bringing forward, in addition to looking at all those different spaces, because the facilities issues are there that we need to attend to in some of the schools. But we, I look at and center around these two buildings. I don't think that was looked at as in-depth prior. So that's the analysis that we bring forward. You know, is it gonna hit a $3 million mark? No, but also say it would only give you one-time dollars to look at. But it's looking at how you disrupt a five-year forecast and be mindful. There's different things that we could do strategically with funds. I've talked with the board president about scheduling kind of a financial work session as well in the summer to talk about some of those and have that facilitated, so our team, the board can kind of sit down together and engage in that.
You raised my point, thank you. I love the idea of a financial work session. But just to clarify your question, you're talking about if there is something we could do to snap our fingers for $3 million this year or $3 million every year?
I want to be careful that we stay on topic of our agenda tonight. But I guess I just want to make the point that we are getting federal SRR dollars that will not be here forever. We also have a hold harmless that we, I don't believe are getting next year, because our enrollment was actually up this past year, which creates, you know, call it a deficit that we didn't, that we are not going to get. I think that the school district, not I think, I know, we haven't been on a spending spree. We are always very frugal in our budget. But with declining enrollment and federal SRR dollars that will not be lasting forever, you know, we do need to have that strategic, long-term planning session on what do we do? Because I want it to be strategic and not have to be knee-jerk if it ever came to that. I know Dave Ross sent us an email about a company that wants to put a cell phone tower on one of our properties. I'm not suggesting that we do that, but I don't want to have to come that, oh, boy, we'd better do that to make some more money around, you know. I just want to continue to be strategic with our budget so that it's not a surprise when tough decisions need to be made. I want them to be strategic and not surprises. That's the point I'm trying to make.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
Kurt? Just a quick comment on, just piggyback on Joel's point. I mean, at least we're having discussions about this. If I put it in perspective, when I joined the board four years ago, I think there was three different business administration people in a three-year span. When we did budget planning, we did not get this kind of detail and have these type of proactive conversations. So I'm just appreciating the work of your team and just even the community asking for it, and appreciating having these decisions in all this detail where you can see where it all is, what the revenue's coming in, and where all the expenses in, and we can ask questions. So I just want to appreciate where we are right now.
Nothing to your point, just another reminder to the general public, visit the Business Department webpages. It's really, you know, how school funding works, our local pieces around school funding, our audit results, things around SRRs. Andy's really worked hard to make sure that there's some forward-facing information that the public can understand, maybe not the background that board members might have. So take a look, give us some feedback, reach out. We're open to feedback around that if there's questions. So let us know, because again, we want to make sure not just the board understanding, but also the community we serve.
Well, thank you for that. That was going to be my next question, that if members of the board, or members of the public had questions about any of the line items in here, they should reach out? And is the best to reach out either you, Mr. Serrano, either of us?
We'll get it to the right spot.
All right?
Yep.
Okay, great, awesome. Anything else? All right, we appreciate the preview.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, that takes us into future agenda items. And I'll ask the board if there are any items for follow-up and communication. All right, hearing none, well, let's discuss kind of a preview of our board meeting calendar upcoming. We have a curriculum committee meeting scheduled for June 14th at 9:30 a.m. here at the Education Service Center. Our next two regular board meetings are on June 20th and July 11th, also 5:30 p.m. at the Education Service Center. And the Policy Committee is nearly finalizing some dates, and so watch for those upcoming. Any questions on the board calendar? All right, hearing none, we have reached the end of our planned agenda. I would move to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Kurt? Motion to adjourn. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?